We have.
Captain Tony?
I can't hear you.
Captain Tony?
Tony, we can't do our prayer. He is with the jail ministries and we appreciate him so very much. And can you take your mask down just for that? Maybe come up here to the podium.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come here even in the midst of this year as it comes to a close and all that we've experienced. Lord, I want to lift up these supervisors and the roles they play, the responsibilities that they bear. Lord, our sheriff and all the law enforcement and what they've gone through this year and what they do on a daily basis to keep us safe. God, I pray that what is done here this morning, even a little bit of the festivities, God, that you would bless this, Lord. The joy of a retirement and then the continuation of the work of this county. God, I pray that you would give these men and women wisdom as they lead us. Give them discernment to do what is best, not just best for them, but best for the whole county. We pray that you would bless us, Lord. Watch over us throughout this COVID-19. We ask that you give us relief. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so very much. Rebecca, would you like to know?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, authorize the board president to execute that authorization from Harrison County and the Digo Data LLC Personal Property and Real Property businesses for printing and mailing for the tax collector's office in the amount of $22,848. I recommend it by Sharon Nash, payable from 001-104-501, printing in the amount of $6,535, payable from 001-104-544, approving the budget amendment thereof. I place that as an addendum on the agenda as a motion.
Have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a discussion. Why wasn't this done earlier? It's supposed to be late. I think they're supposed to be arriving December 1st and this addendum came in at 4:00, 4:41 on a Friday afternoon.
Well, I know it's time sensitive. You're right. My understanding is it's time sensitive and it's supposed to be out by the first.
Yeah, they just be landing on the desk at first.
I imagine during the election and all of that had something to do with it. But Sharon, she can speak to it.
Yes, get up. Yes, Sharon.
Thank you.
Has to be done.
Yes, the question is, you had, usually these go out.
By the first.
By the first.
By the first, December.
December.
We send them out on the first.
Yes, but let me finish. So why weren't they sent out, well, you know, earlier than this? They're usually at everyone's desk by their home by.
The reason they didn't, we wanted them to go out by the first. So we're going through the protocol to make sure that everything got done. And of course, I am new at doing the, putting these on the roll. And this was a hidden gem of Denise Gill's, only she was allowed to do that. So the lady that was helping us is State Tax Commission, Department Revenue and Cam. She was on vacation at some of that time period when we were trying to get this done. So then we turned it in to get approvals on this. It took them time to get a second approval as well. So I had to get two approvals to make all this go through. All that took time. It took like two to three days just to get the approval on one and a few days on the other. I didn't even know I needed a second approval because of where it was coming from. So all of that was delayed and just days trying to get it done.
We also had trouble with the Long Beach Water Tax District.
Yeah.
They had a change in their percentage. So we had to wait for Phil at Delta as well to do what he could do to get that change on the roll.
But isn't this DIP code? Is this somebody new?
No, she does the tabernacles as well.
Why wouldn't this be in your budget? You should have known that it was coming up.
Well, the cards could come out of the budget, but the postage, I didn't, I had 590. I see there's 35,000 in there and 37,000 in there now. But quarterly, 15,000 comes out for tabernacles. Quarterly, that's 60,000 a year. And then if you add in this, that's another 22,000. So I need over $90,000 just in my budget.
There's my point. I mean, why aren't we just now hearing about this? Is this something new or did you know in the last 18 years that you've been over there?
No, the postage typically comes out of order as ground.
So you've always used this company?
Yes.
But do we need another quote?
No, I have another quote. It was more. It came out as more. But building the grounds normally does the postage. This time, this company is going to do it for us at the same cost, same exact cost as we would do it. So I need to get that assigned so they can mail them out for us.
And I think you were told on Tuesday that that was the deadline, but you didn't come in until Friday at 4:41.
I couldn't make it on time because I was still waiting on that second quote that I did not know that I needed.
When did you know that you needed the second quote?
Um, Friday, Thursday or Friday? I think it was, oh, Thursday. They were working on it early morning Thursday. Kept telling me, we're almost done, we're almost done. Of course, we didn't get it till Friday. Late Friday. And we kept calling them throughout the day nonstop, but of course, you know, they can only do what they could do too. But that's when they were able to get it done.
I was under the impression that you had employees that could have maybe mailed them out this time and then.
Well, we are mailing out some of them. We're doing the mobile homes and we're doing the privilege license. So these, because it's so bulk and because we're shorthanded, because I didn't replace some positions due to the new tax collector position, so I'm shorthanded right now. So now we can all move on and hire more staff. But at this time, I'm so shorthanded that I couldn't allow them to do it. So I'm letting this company do it for us, which is six cents a card for them to do it when it costs us two cents a card.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the company.
Yeah, okay. So it's six cents. They'll do all the work for us and we don't have to do it because we're so shorthanded.
So, but next year, everything will be on time?
Yes, ma'am.
And you know the rules and regulations?
Yes, ma'am.
The deadline is Tuesday to get things on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Here to learn from you.
Okay. And I think the more you communicate with the board, the easier it'll be for you and the tax collector.
Yes, ma'am.
The tax, the citizens, the taxpayers.
Taxpayers.
Now get that in a minute. Okay. We have a motion, second. Second, discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new. Number one is the resolution of Harrison County Board of Supervisors Honoring Rupert H. Lacy upon his retirement as Harrison County Emergency Management Director. Where is he? Come on up here. We're gonna try to stay six feet apart.
I'll read it and then you present it. So whereas the great Rupert Lacy began his career on July 8th, 1986, I was still in high school. And whereas, as a high school student, I had heard of Harrison County's director of Public Safety Management, Homeland Security, E911, for the past 13 years, where he was responsible for a wide range of public safety activities, including emergency planning, hazard mitigation, emergency communications, disaster response and recovery for Mississippi's second most populous county. Whereas an expert and comprehensive emergency management, Rupert has served for the past 12 years as chairman of the National Hurricane Conferences Response Committee, where he's helped numerous communities throughout the coast region impacted by natural disasters. And whereas his efforts associated with Hurricane Katrina recovery to each and every disaster to impact Harrison County since, including the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, Rupert has provided invaluable guidance to assist county leaders and residents in instance sense of great adversity. And where Rupert's leadership, Harrison County, under Rupert's leadership, excuse me, Harrison County has effectively established to maintain cooperative working relationships with others in the public and private sectors. Whereas Rupert's commitment to Harrison County and the cities of Biloxi, De'Auville, Godport, Long Beach and Pasfer Strand, as well as their residents, is beyond question. And throughout his many years of service, dedication and work ethic, Rupert has brought great credit to Harrison County, Mississippi. It is fitting and appropriate that Harrison County and its citizens express sincere congratulations and grateful appreciation to Rupert Lacy for his dedicated service to the Harrison County upon the occasion of his well-earned retirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Harrison County, Mississippi, that the board on behalf of the citizens of Harrison County express a sincere congratulations and grateful appreciation to Rupert Lacy for his dedicated service to the Harrison County, Mississippi, upon the occasion of your retirement. Hell no, don't say it.
And I would like to say a few words since I've been working with Rupert. Before I was elected, I was in beautification and thinking Sheriff's Department. And Rupert, we've been through so many things together over the past 21 years here as elected and before. And I can say that you never failed us. We were always there. I think it was 51, 51 name storms we've been through. I can't remember exactly. But we do have a little film we'd like to show you that the people have all gotten together and put together. We'll present this. But I'm trying to keep the COVID thing straight here. I'm gonna put my mask on.
Put the good mask.
I'll put the good, I won't put the ugly one. Wait, wait, wait. So y'all wanna join me and presenting, having, presenting this? We'll try. I know we can't do the six foot thing, but we can all hold our breath and have a picture of it. This is the lifetime improvement. Lifetime achievement right here.
Smile with your eyes.
Okay, one, one time.
Without the mask?
Yes, we're just hanging that.
All right, right here on three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, have a seat, enjoy the show. And thank you for everything.
Thank you. Been my pleasure.
Tell me, I thought you got to say Rupert.
No, he's on the field.
I've heard Rupert.
It ain't over yet.
It ain't over till it's over. Rupert, can you see it back?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Rupert Lacy, Director, Harrison County Emergency Management.
I know that look. I know that look.
Hey Rupert, Greg Michelle here, your favorite MEMA executive director. I know that you worked with a number of executive directors throughout your very long history in emergency management. I just want to take this opportunity and congratulate you on your retirement. Certainly speaking for myself and I know for many others, we certainly hate to see you leave. It's been a wonderful joy being able to work with you and to learn from you and gain off your knowledge and certainly gonna hate to see you go. But man, I envy you a little bit as well. But I hope that you enjoy your retirement and please know that you'll be missed and we appreciate your years of service, not only to Harrison County, but to the state. Enjoy your retirement, Rupert.
Hey Rupert, you like my midnight hours? I'm carrying all the masks, I could yell at you if you didn't mind this. But we've had 38 storms that we've gone through together since 2006. And I don't know what we're gonna do without you. We love you so much. We're gonna miss you so much. You're the best we've ever had. Anyway, we love you. God bless you. Have a great retirement. Enjoy yourself.
Hey Rupert, I just want you to know it's never going to be this way. Let's just smoke a cigarette. I'm gonna miss you, Rupert. Come by and see us.
From all of us at Harrison County, congratulations Rupert. No one deserves rest more than you. We will not be pulling you out of the closet every time we have a storm. We promise to leave you alone for a while, but you better visit. We love you.
I would like to express my appreciation to Rupert for the hard work he's done for this county through his emergency efforts to protect citizens. I wish Rupert a happy and blessed retirement and I hope he stays around and we can see him often. But thank you Rupert for the job well done.
Hey Rupert, just want you to know, congratulations on a little 37 years of service at Harrison County. For the last 12 or 13 years with the Harrison County Emergency Management. I really enjoyed working with you. I hate to see you go, but sometimes you lose good people and you don't want to stay blessed, stay prayed up, receive soon.
Well Rupert, we've gone through a lot of times, a lot of times. We're gonna miss you. We appreciate your public service all these years and just come back and visit every day if you want to. Enjoy your retirement.
Rupert, I want to tell you congratulations on your retirement. Very proud of you. Glad to be your friend for so many years. I've been here for over 30 years and you've been here the whole time. And thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your time and thank you for your loyalty to the Harrison County and the department. What I would like to ask is if you would, since you're going, if you would will your spoons to us, to the sheriff's office. That way we can know what the wind is doing every day. If you can do that. But look, be safe and congratulations.
Hey Rupert, I want to say thank you for all of your advice and your hard work that you've given to Harrison County. I enjoyed working with you in my capacity as county auditor and also as the cop trailer. And I'm really, really in awe of yourness, our smoke breaks and your wise words and language you're listening to. But I hope you take this time and you enjoy retirement and spend it with your wife and your family and friends. We love you. Bye.
Well Rupert, it is hard to believe we're recording these, but we wanted to wish you the best because you have done so much for us personally and for the entire county. Your vision has made us into a comprehensive emergency management, all hazards office. And we want to thank you for your vision and your leadership over these past years. Thank you for everything.
Rupert, several years ago, when you started talking about retirement, I didn't know this day was gonna come so soon. I've appreciated you. The county appreciates you. But most of all, I appreciate your friendship, your leadership, your ability to make decisions, stay calm, give us directions that were very clear. You'll always be my friend. I appreciate you. I wish you the best in your life and your love and your health. And I hope you stay in touch.
Rupert, it's hard to believe that we're telling you goodbye at this time and I just want to tell you thank you for everything you've taught us over the years since before Hurricane Katrina to working in UOC through the BP oil spill and to the recent storms that we've had. I just want to tell you thank you for being a good leader and making me who I am today. And I just want to tell you thank you that I've learned a lot from you and I hope to continue learning from your things that you've taught me in the past to this day and time and we're gonna miss you.
Hey Rupert, congratulations on your retirement. I can honestly say we hate to see you go. All the help you've given to Harrison County, your law enforcement career, your EMA career. You've been a servant to the people and it's been appreciated. You've guided us through many a storms, emergencies and planning for these emergencies. Harrison County Fire Rescue, thanks you. And I thank you personally for all the time that you sat down and helped us do a video to get the word out to the public and do it at the last minute when you really didn't have the time to do it, but you graciously sat for those things. We really appreciate you and we miss you and best of luck in your, in your retirement.
Rupert, I just want to say I'm really gonna miss you. Good luck. You've more than earned this and I wish you good health. God bless.
Rupert, I'm so excited for you. Congratulations and I wish you the best of luck in the future.
Thank you Rupert for your many years of dedication to keeping us safe. I'm gonna miss our birthday ceremonies. Sharing the same birthday with you has been awesome.
Rupert, good luck on your retirement and absolute pleasure working for it and with you.
Thanks Rupert. I appreciate everything that you've taught me over these last few years. It's been one of the most exciting, dangerous times in my life.
Thank you, Mr. Rupert, for all you've done with power.
Good job Jeff Clark for putting that together.
Messed up fire. How do you mess up?
We'll fix it now.
At least he called.
It has been an honor and a privilege. Definitely been an adventure. Who would have known back in the time that Dr. Ladner made the appointment for me to be the director many, many, many years ago, what we were going to experience? I did too. But we've managed to get through the storms via whatever the storm was, the oil spill, the hurricanes, river flooding, tornadoes, ice storm, all of that. Again, we have a big vision here and it's about everybody pulling together and working and that's what has really made it a pleasure. I'm humbled by it. It has truly been a pleasure. I will miss you, but I'll watch on TV. You know, I'll keep up somewhat, somewhat social media, but it's time to let the next generation take over and get us into the non-COVID after effects whenever that will be. 2020 will roll out on the calendar or if we don't pick up on December 31st and finally 13th month of 2020. I'm not gonna say that that's, that's gonna happen, but you know, there's, there's still a lot of challenges. I will stop in, but you know, until we get the virus under control and all that, I'll be masked and keep my social distance. Thought about it the other night. Didn't send you all an email. Couldn't send you an email, but the office will continue and you got good folks there.
They take you off the server? You off the server?
Joe, I'll be sending those out.
I will, I will receive the emails the way that I get them. I just can't guarantee you that y'all will receive them.
Because we got one at 2:00 in the morning.
Okay, as long as you got one at 2:00 in the morning.
In the hurricane, some tornado touched down in Long Beach.
That was it. So, you know, I didn't hear from Dr. Ladner, so that was a good thing too. But it has been an honor and a pleasure and you know, y'all still got three more years, three more hard years to go and we're just at the front end of Zeta. Matt needs help or Pam or Ginger Bell or anybody like that, I'll help them through that, working around me, shall we say. And like I said, we still got COVID and who knows what else is going to happen. So, but it has been an honor and my pleasure over the short span working for Harrison County. So it truly has been a pleasure. Let me let y'all get back to business because y'all got a busy agenda right here at Christmas time. So thank you again.
Thank you Rupert.
Thank you darling. I'll see you in a couple of minutes. Bye John.
Under number two, we'll proceed with the resolution from Harrison County Board of Supervisors congratulating Callie Jones upon the occasion of her 80th birthday.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah. Have a motion. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. I think it's, I like to do it after, but you have this presentation first.
Just tell me, would you come forward this is, in case no one did this with my mother?
It's your mama? Oh.
We don't quite have as much accolades as Brother Rupert in terms of public service, but I'm sure that she equals him in terms of children's service. So, Mr. on behalf of your 80th birthday.
Yes.
We just want to make sure she's sitting there. So she don't fall down.
I'm rubbing crime ass. We take all that.
I'm not gonna read it all, but it's basically a resolution of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors congratulating Callie Jones on the occasion of her 80th birthday on this, on this 7th day of December, 2020. I want to thank the board for allowing us to do such. And also, on behalf of me, your son, I have the 80th birthday celebration honoring Miss Callie Jones in recognition for your dedication, unconditional commitment and love to your family, church and community presented on this date, the 7th day of December, 2020. Thank you and happy birthday also, brother, with the past 70. Harrison County Board of Supervisors, Kent Jones, this is Rupert.
Ms. Jones, do you have any secrets you'd like to tell us at this time? Do you have any secrets that you'd like to tell us at this time? We'll talk and let you see.
If we could get a picture please.
Can I stand right back?
Ken, would you want to?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Just, just we can get a picture if you don't mind. You can hold the resolution. I'll hold it for her. I mean, your mom can hold it. Don't cover your face. Uh-oh, camera gotta get anything this now. Got it? Thank you so much. I'm doing it, John. 15 minutes of fans. Once again, thanks to board for allowing us to have this. Thank y'all.
Happy birthday, Mrs. Jones. You did a, you did a good job. You know the sister.
They're gonna make it with me. Yes.
Okay, that first motion.
Kent, that's the most important thing that was, that's our most, achievement. Yeah.
Now they're watching the pinstripe suit.
That's the most important part of the achievement.
First motion that we made was for the resolution of, uh, L. H. Lacy. And we'd like to make the resolution, um, remember motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. This is when everybody starts getting in my business. Okay, unrecognized Bojex, governmental, uh, can you ask them to quieten down a little bit in there?
We'd ask them.
Thank you. Bojex is governmental relations officer for Memorial Hospital. Hello?
Hello. And what a tough act to follow between Rupert's retirement, Kent's mom's birthday, but I did bring hand sanitizer.
Thank you so much.
Anyway, just wanted to come by, introduce myself to my new position. I'm the governmental relations officer for the Memorial Hospital Foundation. And because this board plays an integral role in Memorial Hospital, uh, I will have to stand in presence at meetings in case anybody asks any questions or needs any information. Two things we're working on right now that I think is of interest to the board. We've applied for a Restore Act, uh, monies in the amount of $28 billion to construct a pediatric outpatient clinic in Memorial. It will be the only one of its kind on the coast. Right now, if any child needs pediatric outpatient surgery or operations, they usually have to go over to either Mobile and New Walons. And I think so many of y'all realize that, uh, Medicaid pays a lot for pediatric, uh, a lot of pediatrics are on Medicaid. And so those are Medicaid Mississippi dollars going out of town. So by having this clinic, it'll just make it closer and keep, uh, you know, more kids be able to be treated here. The other thing we're working on, and we should have certification in February or March, is we're going to be training residents now, uh, in the field of family medicine. These kids will come out of medical school and, uh, basically Memorial will be coming teaching hospital where we'll be teaching at any one time to the residents in the field of start with family medicine, family practice, and then hopefully go into internal medicine. So I'll have more information on that for you hopefully by February or March when the certification goes through, but in the interim, I'll be at your meetings. So if you have any questions, please call me. Thank y'all again. And have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, under number four is recognize, uh, Kathy Springer, United Way Executive to discuss the membership campaign of United States Services and her intended media.
Did you call, uh, yes ma'am? Good morning, everybody.
You can take the mask off.
Oh, thank you. Um, I did, I think last year when I came, I brought t-shirts, but I brought masks, United Way masks for everybody. It was here and I hope that you'll wear them all over town. So, uh, anyway, good morning, everybody. And, um, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you once again. And I want to thank you to start for your leadership in the most unusual year that I can ever remember, be it a pandemic or a storm or an almost storm. I appreciate you so much. Since we met with you last year, um, United Way of South Mississippi has put over $358,000 to local agencies for response to COVID for those who are one paycheck away from disaster. For medications, for rental assistance, utilities assistance, um, for the disabled. I've got my list right here and I'll leave somebody out. Food. Food insecurity is a real thing in our county and I know that you know that. At Moore Community House, Man of Ministries, Gulf Coast Mental Health, for the first time, we were able to help them, Boys and Girls Club, Back Bay Mission, Catholic Charities, Disability Connection, the Salvation Army and so many. We continue, um, to fight COVID and to help those get through it because secure and safe families are home and are fed. And that's important to United Way. In addition to the COVID response, we have responded non-stop to the hurricane. We work at the direction of the Harrison County EOC and we've continued to do that. Mississippi 211 is a United Way product. They have fielded thousands of calls as, as your United Way office. We have taken over 1,700 work orders for volunteer assistance, be it a tree on the house, a fence down, an elder, um, name it. And we have taken work orders. Uh, we work with the community foundation. We work with goodwill, Catholic charities and many others. But honestly, my, I've seen my team go into their own pocket many, many days because it's too late in the day for a food pantry or it's a weekend when we happen to be working to get food to a family that's not eating. So those things really do happen at your United Way. At your United Way. The problem is we don't have volunteers coming into the area and so we're chipping away at it and we won't stop, um, due to COVID, due to wildfires, due to other storms. I know that you guys know all of that. And then as I spoke to you about last year, we awarded over $650,000 in community impact grants to local agencies to help them expand their missions and to keep them up and going. I don't want to fail to mention the nine free pre-K classrooms that we have in Harrison County schools. One's in the Gulfport School District. The rest of them are in the Harrison County School District. We had to do a lot of things differently this year to keep those kids in school. We offered a virtual option and just a handful took us up on the virtual. We've had one COVID case in one of those classrooms and that's it. Those kids are going to school and I'll tell you, those four-year-olds will read by the time they finish these pre-K classrooms. There's been just some really unique challenges. I know that you know. And our Dolly Parton Imagination Library is fully funded. There was a time when we were underwater with that program. We've got room to enroll over 200 more kids. We've got about 1,700 enrolled today. That program is going strong and there are just so many things that are going on at your United Way. When the phone rings, it, it almost turns into a counseling session sometimes. Uh, my staff does not hurry anybody up off the phone. They listen because we can't work if we don't know because a real problem to someone else is a real problem. So I'm telling you all of that today to once again ask your permission to run United Way campaign in the county offices. And I'd like to recognize the staff at the Harrison County Jail because they were so passionate to us last year, Sheriff. We enjoyed being out there so much. They were so sweet and they were so interested in the work we do. And we got to know some of the sheriff deputies and we've even had to call them for some things that we didn't know how to handle. So they've been great to us. Today, my staff is here and they can stand up and two of our board members here, Mr. Rick Williams and Mr. Charles Apola, they came today to support us. But on any given day, this team is in action and we're making the connections, um, to keep families safe, to keep families housed and to keep children in school. So today I ask your permission, uh, for us to be allowed to contact the county offices again.
Ms. Springer, may I ask?
Yes, sir.
Years ago, when, when we made contributions to United Way, the contributor could specify the particular organization
They can.
The money was to go to that they were contributing to. Is that still in effect?
It is. That's called a designation. And so I'm glad you brought that up because we can talk about that for just a second. Every contribution's tax deductible and 99 cents of every dollar stays in this community. We send 1% to United Way Worldwide for dues and the next year it's gonna be 2%. We do pay dues to be a United Way agency. But yes, sir, you may designate to an agency and we are obligated to do the background work to make sure that they are square with the Secretary of State, that they are a 501 CT, C3, and that they are legitimate and bona fide. And if we, and sometimes we find out they're not and then we would call the donor to get, receive direction on that.
Many years ago, uh, we talked about a, uh, and I believe you got a grant to do that. You weren't there at the particular time, but I think John McFarland and myself and the board went together to try and find, there were, there seemed to be so many, uh, duplication of efforts and, uh, we wanted to have one phone call that could direct, help direct people to the right, uh, agency for the right services. Is that still in effect?
I have no idea, but we do make a point that when the calls do come in, we work hard to understand the issue that the caller has and many times we uncover other issues and we make, we help them make the connection to the right agency. And I'm sure John does that at the Red Cross also. And they also.
He was with the newspaper at that time, but it was, it was, it's been many years.
Honey, you know, I don't pay that. I know Disability Connection does put out a book and I'm sure you guys have seen it and you can access it online and it's every agency doing whatever they do. And that, that's a great publication that they put out and we, we help them fund that every, every time.
I, I don't think I've seen it, so if you can make that available to the board.
You know what? I'll drop some off in your offices, um, this week. We'll get some. You can also access it online at disabilityconnection.org, but all the agencies use it and I, I believe some of the deputies have those with them and I know the Gulfport Police do also. I know that book is widely used, yeah.
That's great, cause I know, cause we can, we can use that. We get a lot of calls too.
I'm sure you do.
That would be great.
Kathy, I have a question. I'm thrilled about the, uh, pre-K four-year-olds, you know, they say building a stronger child is easier than fixing a broken man. So I love that. One in Gulfport, how many in Harrison County schools?
Eight.
Free, and that's free pre-K?
It is. It is free.
Is it fully funded by United Way? Is it part of a school system?
We're grant funded.
What type of grant?
Uh, we are funded through, well, we are just different. We're appealing all the time. The Harrison County School District gives us a grant for it as well.
Okay, good.
But we've received, wherever we can apply, you know, we'll, we apply for grants every day.
And you have enough of those classes? Would you like more? I guess that's where I'm going with this.
The demand is always there.
That's what I've heard.
And there are certified teachers in every single classroom and a teacher's assistant for 20 kids. And I will tell you, it has been a challenge this year getting a substitute. If one of them has to be out, we do our best to get a substitute and it's not unusual for one of these ladies to step into the classroom if, uh, we have somebody out for the day. But, um, yeah, it's, the parents pay a $250 supply fee so the child just shows up. No book bag. Everybody has the same thing. There's no, everybody has the same supplies. Everybody looks the same. So, um, that's what they pay. And then as an aside, just to go a little bit further, United Way of South Mississippi is a member of the Barksdale Reading Institute's Parent Academy. And so the deal is if your child comes to pre-K, you must attend four sessions a year. And then we threw in an extra one. Last year we partnered with Community Bank and did a financial literacy class for the parents. I didn't think it was gonna go over well and it was standing room only and they kept the presenters there late. So we know the parents want this information, want to be a stronger family. And so, um, we worked through the Barksdale Institute for the curriculum, how to support your child in school. How to help them.
And out of school now.
Yes, and I wish I called again, the Barksdale Reading Institute's Parent Academy.
Parent Academy.
And we are the only non-educational entity that are members of that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And y'all, I don't want to leave before I say how much we have enjoyed Rupert Lacy and working at his direction. He has taught us so much about disaster response and his whole team with, uh, Matt as well. But, uh, we have worked very closely with him, particularly this year. And, uh, we, we will miss him, but we look forward to, um, the new director. We work with Matt every day also. So I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for all you do. Thank you, Jean.
How old were you when we first met? You were with Mental Health years ago, right?
I was at Gulf Oaks. Yeah, I was in the hospital for 30 years.
You with Biloxi Regional?
I was. I just, just finished my career there three years ago. So that was fun. I know. So you were on an ambulance and back when I started my career. So I have to ask the question, will we be allowed to run camp?
I don't know if this is necessarily a motion. I'll make a motion authorized them to access Harrison County.
A second motion.
Thank you. I appreciate the work you do every day. So thank you very, very much. Y'all have a blessed birthday.
You have a motion with a second?
Yes, a second.
No, those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I will say that if you give to United Way and you get all these other calls from all the other agencies, you can say, I'm sorry, I give to United Way. It does help some. Cause you, then United Way gets to them. I don't see Dave Dennis. Dave Dennis?
He's outside.
He's out there.
Okay. Uh, Frank, I had forgot.
He was supposed to be at the end, didn't he?
Well, we're gonna move him up. He did. He changed his schedule.
Bump it down there, man.
See out there? Okay, Dave. Recognize Dave Dennis as he gives an update.
Thank you.
Dave Dennis as he gives an update on the Walking Path Initiative.
Thank you. I'm going to take this off while I speak as I.
Thank you.
Well, first off, thank all of you for your support. Thank you for in September, I'm sorry I missed the meeting, supporting the, the contract but also it's moving forward. I think Cindy Walker will come up in a moment and give you a real update that there's, um, there's surveys going on with people right now. They're interviewing them. In fact, they may even ask if you all want to be interviewed. It's, I think it's an initiative that is moving forward and it's an emerging sense of people really wanting to do this. But, uh, a lot of very, very good things going on. We, since you all have been so supportive for the, uh, for the initiative, we thought we should at least give you an update, tell you it's working. There's a lot of private activity going on and a lot of private support to push it forward. And given that, uh, uh, we're gonna do our very best to keep it moving, moving forward privately. LOX did a nice spread on it last night, uh, but they're doing interviews, outlets doing interviews. The survey, there was a privately funded survey that, uh, was in your packet, I believe, that I think Cindy will give you just a very quick thumbnail on it. So I think exceptional. Thank all of you, uh, for your support. Thank you, sir, uh, for what you're doing. And we just candidly appreciate what you're doing. Rebecca, you were not part of this initially, but this group has been extraordinarily supportive from the very beginning. So, thank you.
I saw both your interviews this morning actually on LOX. And, um, it's a little misleading because what he showed was with sidewalks and all.
It's hurt damage.
That was all storm damage.
Yeah, it is.
Kind of took me back as I thought, this is not a typical scene because our Sand Beach guys usually do a really good job.
No, no complaints from that perspective. Now that clearly was, uh, some Zeta after physics.
Which might be a minute.
Thank you. It's not totally linked. Yes, so we're working on those things too.
Were you not taken off the state list for some reason, the state funding?
Uh, yes, on the, on the restoration, the PP restoration money. When that list got chopped, roughly half of it got chopped, so to speak, or half of the participants that the committee, that the committee, I think Lieutenant Governor appointed three, Governor three and Speaker three. So of that nine member committee, they had approved all the way through, as had MDA, a $1.2 million request, grant request that would have gone in, in fact, to supplement what you all have been doing and doing benches and other things. That was kind of the idea. In coordination, total coordination with y'all, but if, that was where we were going with it. It got waxed when the session got passed. It probably, in total numbers, half of the projects, which you're well aware of. So, yes.
Sorry.
You, you tee it up, uh, that's why you get three strikes in baseball. You tee it up, swing again. I'm gonna step back and let Cindy Walker speak, then you can give you a little more, if y'all got a minute of that. Thank you.
I'd just be great and say first off, thank you so much for the support of this concept. When we are talking out in the community, we're finding that it's not just one of us that feels this or a few of us that feels that there are issues. If we want to become an attraction for the younger generations behind us, the millennials and the Gen Zs who value a walkable community. So much so that in the MLS listings of homes across this country now, they are beginning to say, what is the walk score? And the walk score simply means just what we are looking at. How easy is it for me to get from one location to another on foot? Because our 21-year-olds now have fewer driver's licenses than any other age group in the country. Because our 21-year-olds now have fewer driver's licenses than any other age group in the country. And that to me is so staggering, because we're like, wait a minute. I remember all ours couldn't wait to get a car.
Did they get revoked, or what?
Changing. You know who buys the most cars is the people in our age bracket, the 60 and up. New cars. Look out for some of those places that are selling new car dealerships. But with that, if we don't have a walkable community, they are not able to actually feel an attraction to the beach, which is our natural resource we want, everybody wants to get to, or any of the other blue ways that we have. So these things are important from an economic standpoint as well. We did a survey, and you have that copy, on question six that asked those folks. We sent it out to just about 257 people. 246 answered that one question, and it said, in their responses, that 63% of them thought we're not a walkable community. It's important for old people like me, not me, that I need to be able to walk when I know Long Beach can drive.
It's too late.
Maybe we'll walk together, right? But this is one of those things that I think is valuable information for us to know what the general group around this issue are answering. Alta is a great opportunity for us. We've already held three interviews. I would love to know if all of you would be willing to sit on an interview with their Zoom. We're lasting about 45 minutes to an hour, to let them pick your brains about this, because y'all have a very unique perspective. We've had three sessions so far with a total of about 18 different people that have been on the screen. And they're talking about this countywide. It's not just 90. 90 is our most visible pathway, but it is countywide. We're looking at those things and discussing what are the issues. And so you all know the issues more than most. Without your support, we couldn't do any of this. And so we are so grateful that you are behind us in at least getting the facts and the information. And who knows if VP will ever have some money, but we are looking at other avenues. We're talking to mayors, what can they do? And we're encouraging some to say what Gulfport said. If you want a sidewalk and you want to pay half, we'll pay half. So we're trying to encourage that.
I know. We, in the county, we put in a lot of walking tracks. Is that applicable to what?
All of this. We're looking at it.
We've done a lot of walking tracks throughout the county, especially at our recreational facilities like Ball Field.
Right. Well, and you know, my late husband and Glenn worked diligently in Long Beach to try to get that to five miles now. But our problem that we're finding in these interviews, Mr. Lattner, is that if they are there, getting to them is the difficulty. There is no pathway that's safe for somebody to take a sidewalk to the senior citizen center. That walkway is there in Long Beach. So it's those things that we're looking at. And in the end, within a year, we'll have, hopefully, a project that's going to come to you as recommendations, what to think about, complete streets and all those other things.
Have you gone to SMPDB and to the Gulf Regional Planning Commission?
Gulf Regional Planning is helping to fund some of these efforts. So, yeah.
Have y'all finished my road study on North Swan Road? I've been waiting on for six months.
It's our fault.
Yeah, the traffic count has been done. They're processing that data.
Thank you.
It's underway. And we also have to set aside, you know, through the MPO funding, that will help support these recommendations, you know, through the 80% funding.
North Swan is...
It won't just be a plan on the shelf. We hope to, you know, work with y'all's engineers, Jackie, and Pat, and everybody else that's, you know, are kind of advocates for biking and walking. When all the other pro-ries, you know...
We're also, North Swan is becoming extremely concentrated and very dense in population. And if they can't walk anywhere on that road, it's not wide enough. But it would be a very good area to have.
Well, there's a lot of issues. The Armed Forces Center, their residents tell me that they're being told by their directors not to get on 90. It's too dangerous. And they're all those three-wheel trikesicles. They're sending them to Pass Reg. And those of you that know Pass Reg well, they're sectioned, they're trying to get the keys for the dinner conversation.
That's not safe.
It is, now they're saying to them, get a bus, because they know it's not safe. I will let you know that we're also speaking with DMR and looking at Tyblons and Go Mesa money in relation to the 90 and erosion issues and all that. So if you have ideas, we're open. Most of you know how to get in touch with us, give us a call and let us know. But thank you for helping us, Keith. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, because I think Ms. Blackwell, do you mind if we, Frank does the door, Ms. Blackwell? Because it may take a...
I'll make a motion now.
You have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those are favor signified. I say no. All opposed motion carried. There you go, Frank.
Thank you.
I apologize. I honestly thought I'd be in Hancock County for a lot longer. Thank you. It is bad news, as we expected. It's actually a little bit worse than what we expected from a coverage standpoint, not to say pricing standpoint.
Maybe I should have gotten this report, like, after 2020. Maybe it'd have been better.
I'm sorry?
Maybe if we waited till 2021, it would have been better.
Yes. So I put together this historical package just to show you kind of where we've been since 2012 to now, in both exposure as well as premium. And 2012, 2013, obviously, that was post-Catrina, rates were horrible. Our total insured values were much less than what we have now. But we are getting back to those rates. And so if you look in the entire proposal, page 17 is where we will start. Or 16, I apologize. We did put it out to market, as we talked about. Obviously, we had to fire several carriers from a property standpoint just due to them not being willing to. Amris wanted to increase our values again on our Masonry non-combustible schedule. I think y'all remember last year, they did that. And so we were, we had to replace them, and we replaced them with several different carriers. So long and short, we're going from 1.7 to 1... I would recommend option two. It's actually broader coverage with, for less money. They're giving us the wind-driven rain. We do have some carriers out to market still, but that's, this is worst-case scenario. One thing that I would look at is on our Masonry non-combustible. These are better constructed buildings. After Zeta, we did not see a lot of claims from those buildings. We saw them from our other schedule. And so there is an option to increase the deductible. Right now, we have a 1% deductible, which I believe is around $900,000, some odd thousand dollars. If we wanted to go to a $5 million deductible, there's a lot of public entities on their better constructed buildings that are going to larger deductibles, that would be a savings of $108,000. And so that may be something that we may want to consider. On page 18, we have a number of different options.
Did you say $5 million?
$5 million, yes, ma'am. And several of the entities have gone to that. So what we've done, I think y'all remember, we take our worst constructed buildings, and they're on one schedule, and so they don't drive up the rate on our better constructed buildings, this building, the jail. And so that rate for those Masonry non-combustible that are less likely to be damaged in a storm is a lot lower than our other buildings that we have. You know, some of the buildings at the county farm, some of our work centers. And so you would leave that deductible alone for those buildings, for the better constructed buildings.
If I may ask you, send for $100,000 savings on premium.
$108.
We have $108,000, $108,000 on premium, but we would have a deductible of $5 million. Would that be worth for that?
That's what I'm talking about.
I wouldn't recommend doing that, but if we had, if we wanted to, what I'm trying to do is get us back to a flat renewal. I want to try to... So this right here is apples to apples, what we had last year. That's a 1% deductible. If y'all chose, if we needed to save money, if you turn to page 18, I have every option possible of how to try to save any money that we can. So, I mean, whatever y'all want to do as far as that is concerned.
That's a shot in the dark. I mean, if we really had a bad storm, it wouldn't be worth it. But if we didn't, it would be.
Correct. If the worst part of this...
But if we have a building, we have several buildings, we can almost build them ourselves.
With Zeta, y'all are going to hit y'all's deductible. You know, we're still, they're going through their second round of looking at the buildings right now. I would imagine we're probably going to hit our deductible. And so this is just something that I want to provide y'all every option, knowing that the market is getting as hard as it's getting. The biggest, the biggest issue with the program this year is our law enforcement liability and our public officials' liability limit has gone down. The carriers, all carriers decrease our values. I talked to Mr. Holloman about it. He feels comfortable. It didn't go down. Y'all still have higher limits than most entities. But, and we had a very robust program prior to. We did get a quote from Safety National on our casualty lines. They would not agree to choice of counsel or the choice of TPA. And so, and that's what we told them.
No.
That's right. So we have time before renewal, where I'd ask the board, if, while we continue to work on carriers, if something comes in better, that we are able to work with the administration and bind a better program at the last minute.
Would it be, I mean, would it be possible for us to put our money in a... Let's see, I've got a controller. But a Pam, to put our money in an interest-bearing account, that same amount of money or less than that, and come out better than, and become self-insured than...
You can, you can self-insure...
Then we pay a $5 million deductible, I mean.
Well, no, no. Right now, you don't have a $5 million deductible. That's an option I was providing. Yep.
It's $2 million is what the renewal premium would be, $2 million a year.
What's the deductible on that?
With a 1% deductible.
Correct. But this also includes your casualty program. This includes everything, your bonds, your aviation. So that's not just property. Your property premium alone for your non-wind resistant schedule is $237, and for your Masonry non-combustible, which is our big schedule, is $860,000. So a million under $2 million is your property.
With a 1%.
With a 1%, excuse me. And a lot of the buildings on the schedule, y'all probably can hand up, discuss it.
I'm surprised to sell some of them. You would buy one?
Well, some of the stuff we probably would cover in most instances. We just got reimbursed by FEMA after Katrina. And so I know there's entities, we're required to carry coverage on those forever. But if they're buildings that we wouldn't replace, there's a lot of entities on the coast that are now saying, we're not going to build this back. If it's damaged, we'll just take it off the SOB. And so those are things that we've looked at in the past. But some of these lower-value buildings, the savings is negligible.
Thank you. When is this decision? We got to rehearse.
Your non-wind resistant comes up December 31st, and then your, all other lines come up January 1st.
So we got to make a decision by next Monday, or at next Monday's meeting, I'm assuming?
The, I think the following Monday, is it?
We meet then, we meet next month, and that's it.
Yeah.
In December. I mean, uh...
There is an item that we're going to have to meet on the 28th also. This is Friday. Did we get some information for me on the 28th?
And one thing that we've done in the past is just, we understand this is worst-case scenario. If we get a better product, that I could work with the administration to the 31st and bind a better product if we get something better.
As any time I would have that we would have, for example, we can make that decision in January of...
By Thursday.
You've got to do it prior to that.
Yes, sir.
Can we have that, the information that we need? I know, but the rest of it, I mean, the discussions, we don't have that much time.
I can meet with y'all individually, if y'all would like to, anytime you want to.
We can have a workshop, if you want to have a workshop on it.
It's pretty clear to me, the price has gone up. It's going to be about $10 million bucks with a 1% deductible. But it will be a little better policy, because it's got the wind-driven range.
Correct.
Because that is hard to come by.
Correct.
Find with this, come up with something better, 20 down, 31st calls.
I will not bond it until...
So I'll make that motion, we accept option two.
Don't bind it.
Option two, unless he comes back.
But he's been looking all year, really. And you've talked about this, Rebecca.
What is the likelihood that you could make that?
Do we have a better program? The only way we can have a better program is if Safety National comes back and... Because we asked, we told them that it was a no-go without choice of counsel or choice of third-party administrator. And so they're reviewing all that. If they come back, they were a savings, and it brings us back to the limits that we previously had under Brett. The only thing that worries me, you know, Brett has been very good to the county for a number of years, when that times were very tough in law enforcement. They were very good, and I believe you have a good working relationship. Our TPA has a very good working relationship. So it's kind of one of those things, do we switch for $40,000 or $50,000 savings? And have an unknown. But we are still going through those traps with that carrier in...
Frank, could you tell them more, the decricion of the coverage, though? Because you said, "I approved it." They need to know exactly what liability issue coverage is. We've never had, we've never had a claim, not since I've been here. There was one claim that's been higher than what he proposed as being the new liability. We've never had a claim. But it's that, law enforcement.
Well, I think historically, the, you know, what's been going on the last few years, I think we're better off. We haven't had it historically. You never know what can happen.
That's true. But what was it, $5 million before?
Yes, sir.
And now they reduced it to a million and a half. That's what I was trying to make sure everyone understood. And so that's a three and a half million dollar difference. The likelihood of claiming, very few claims exceed a million, maybe five, in which we've not had one, other than the one that was way back, that was, that was a problem. And so that was a million-dollar policy to me.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't like it was...
I'm just more confident now that things have been happening.
And I did, I did go to the excess markets to see what it would take to get us back to $5 million. And it costs about $250,000 to have an excess market go from 1.5 million to 5 million. So it's almost the same as our primary premium. And so I didn't think y'all were interested in that, but I did want to get a quote on that just to see what it would look like.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept option two.
With the caveat, if he were to come back, we have everything.
We're still, we're still working. We have a couple of property carriers that we may plug in, we may replace, because we have, now, we've gone from one carrier on our non-wind resistant to multiple. And so we're still working with some carriers that may plug in at $5 million.
It might get better.
That's right. It's not going to get worse than this.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we've had discussion. All those are favor signified. I say no. All opposed motion carried.
Thank you all. Y'all go through it. Y'all have any questions, feel free to call me.
Thank you so much. Number six is consider auto damage claim for Jennifer Blackwell in the amount of $836,000 and $60,000 investigated by Officer Lisa Bradley. Okay, is Ms. Jennifer Blackwell here? Ms. Blackwell?
Hi there. I'm a librarian. I've passed her at elementary for the past 15 years. And I was taking my daughter to Fort High, and I was coming back. And I'm coming down Hancock to turn on the maples where it makes that curve. And one of the Kenone guys was out there cutting grass. And he was stopped with his mower leaning toward the road. And there was a lady out of her car going into the old detention center. So he was waiting for her. So while he was stopped, I went to park, and then he took, he went forward and rocked along and hit the side of my new car. I wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a big deal, but it was a brand-new car. I just got it because Zeta took out my other car. But it put a nice big dent to the side.
Did they have signs?
No.
This gentleman actually, of course, went into a gravel, turned around. As I understand it, he went off the gravel. As I understand it, he went off the grass and turned a gravel part of the driveway without with flames to run it. We, this, this board has authorized claims for, under those circumstances where somebody went through.
I want, I'd like to hear from Ms. Bradley.
Ms. Bradley?
Lisa, first of all, uh, why were you called to investigate this?
I, I called her. I, she was at the courthouse.
Why didn't you call that district's officer?
She was just there and we got the call in and she was waiting to go back to school. So we were just in a hurry and just figured we could send her over there. And I actually, really at the time, was thinking she was that district, that she was covering that district. The districts kind of run close together and.
They, yeah, they, even in Broadmore, I went to a door and she's like, you're not my district. And I looked at the map. It is literally two blocks farther down. It's very strange in that area.
And she just happened to call me, I guess, because if she comes, if the safety officer in this is too, has to come away from.
County Farm.
County Farm. I don't mind helping out, but you know.
I was just curious. So what did you see?
Well, I went out there and, um, one of, um, buildings and grounds guys was cutting grass. And, um, I questioned him about it and he had no signs and stuff. And I told Mr. Miller to get with Mr. Tim to get signs for next time.
Tim, have, have you heard about this?
Building a claim?
Yeah, actually.
Oh, well, I did know about that.
Actually, I thought that was.
Originally, Paul, it was the road department.
Yeah.
And I told him it was not, so, um, we did get the house departments some signs and get him fixed up where anytime he's doing maintenance around there, he can put a sign out, so.
Yeah, that's important.
Yeah.
Hal, has your safety officer trained you on the protocol that Carolyn got with you on the, my, on the Carolyn?
I have sent on a, a motion reflective yet for that particular law form, because I have one on it and it's been on.
And his signs been ordered to?
I've got the sign. I already got that.
So Lisa, you confirmed that he probably went on the gravel area to turn around and there were no signs?
Yeah, no signs.
That's because the rock to kick was going on the gravel. I'll make a motion to pay that claim.
We have a motion. What, pay? Second?
Second discussion, uh.
All of it or just the deductible? Her deductible.
Tim?
I don't think she turned it into an insurance, go ahead and see.
Why not?
Shows the total claims, so. I asked, there's two estimates there.
Usually what we do is we can pay your deductible or pay your out-of-pocket.
Right.
And then we move, you, you make the claim. If you have any out of deductible, then we'll pay the deductible.
It's against her insurance.
I think that's why, because I, I just filed against my insurance. Zeta took out my three. I, I, three took out my four.
This is one of the cases where I think we really had some liability. But just like workman's comp, those guys need to be trained not to, to go into that gravel. It must've been obvious that there was gravel there. And anytime you get a mower or bush hog in gravel, you better duck because it's coming. So that's one of those liabilities that I don't have a problem with.
But there's two amounts that the motion didn't include, which.
And I think there needs to be some just, there's some training and necessary disciplinary action for the employees to do this kind of stuff.
The other one, I'm sorry. Well, just a minute. I, I think Ms. Martin had the floor.
I'm sorry, I was just, we've got two, we, we don't pay tax. So both of these, one of your quotes is for nine sixty-two. What the county would actually pay would be eight thirty-six, sixty-three. And then the other quote that you got was eight ninety-six, but there again, that includes tax. So that would be eight thirty-seven, sixty. So we go with the lowers.
Yeah, we pay it that way. What a claim, she's making a claim all over. I don't, I don't.
There's two ways to handle it. In the past, with the way we've tried to handle it, to avoid the tax or to simply have whoever she has prepare the car.
Be allowed.
And we don't pay the tax. They don't like to pay it either. So sales tax would definitely, that's what we did in the past to avoid having to pay something. If she's gotta pay it, then that company gonna collect the sales tax and she's probably entitled to reimbursement of that also. If we pay it correctly, um, then the county probably can save some money, about that little bit of money. Now whether or not you wanna go through that for thirty-seven dollars.
Oh, they do.
No, it's, actually, it's almost seventy, I think.
Seventy dollars. That's, that's up to the board to determine.
We need, need to figure out a policy that we follow though on that.
We normally make the check, the, whoever the company is, is gonna make it and then in her, together.
Would you have, would you have any objections to that and just have them bill us as opposed to you? Bless your heart. That's where that happens. Okay, we have a motion to, uh, pay the claim.
The lower.
The lower claim.
Lower of the two and bill the county.
Yes, directly.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by say nay. All opposed, motion. Thank you. Under consent agendas, items number seven thirteen will be placed to the agenda. Same appearing to be reaching non-controversial matters on which all supervisors are liable to agree. Motion, motion, second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by say nay.
Uh.
All opposed, motion carried. Number fourteen is order occurring with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of points at five, seven acres of real property to TNJ Enterprises LLC for the purpose of drainage area, uh, for existing lands having a purchase price of eight thousand dollars and authorizing the board president to move on here to occupy, uh, to execute, uh, necessary documents.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Where is this property exactly?
It's a ditch between our office and the building, the two of these buildings on the. So we sell half the ditch.
Half the ditch? Everybody should have a ditch.
Why can't we sell half the ditch?
When he originally filed for his permit with the city of Gulfport, they said the ditch in the side in the back was enough. And then they came back and said he needed to do retention in the back. So to have additional parking, he came to us and said, will you sell me half the ditch? So, because he didn't own it. We gave him easement to it, but now he has to own it in order not to have, put retention in the back. So I said, yeah, I'll sell you a ditch.
Yeah.
So he's not, um, he's not using that, filling that in for parking. He's gonna use that for train ditch from his auto.
It's gonna be a ditch. The best part is he's gonna know my side of the ditch too, as well, so.
That's what I was just fixing to ask, is you take care of maintenance of the ditch.
And it's, I say it's a ditch, but it's just a, you know, it's a normal ditch.
A square.
It's not a.
Full square?
Yeah. It's not a, it's not a, you know, seaweed ditch. It's not one of those.
So we have a motion, second, and further discussion. All those in favor, signify by say nay.
Uh.
All opposed, motion carried. Number fifteen is order occurring with resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing approving the sale of three point zero acres of real property to Rosary Jenkins for the purpose of constructing and a, constructing and locating a shop and lay-down yard having a purchase price of seventy-five thousand dollars and authorizing the board president to execute, uh, the documents. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by say nay.
Uh.
Opposed, motion carried. Number sixteen is order occurring with resolution of the Harrison County Commission authorizing and directing president and, uh, executive director and other commission officers to execute, execute and submit a grant agreement for funding pursuant to the Mississippi Development Authority ACE Fund program to be used as, um, um, Seaway Composites LLC for building, redevelopment and other expenditures related to their expansion and approving the MDA as its facility in Gulfport, Mississippi and authorizing the board president to execute all necessary documents. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion?
What are they doing? What are they expanding out there?
They're adding on another bank to the new building that they just recently built, adding thirty-five new jobs. Two point one million dollar investment. And they are approved for two hundred thousand dollar grant.
You can take your mask there.
Okay, you want to try that one?
I forgot what she looked like.
They are approved for a two point one million dollar improvement capital investment in, um, MDA approval for two hundred thousand ACE grant money. That's gonna help for the pad laying of that building and it'll be thirty-five new jobs.
Are they, did they get a new contract?
They did. They have a new deal, new contract.
Y'all can do it with that grant pass. You know, y'all have to front it for it.
We do. It flows through us. They just, they pay on the front end and submit the invoice and then it's just reimbursed back to the company.
And this is either the sixth or seventh expansion of semen, so we're really proud of that. They continue to grow. It's a great, great industry we have in the industrial world.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Wish we could get that one in north, Miss North Harrison County growing.
We're closing in on it. We've got some people sniffing around.
Okay, we have a motion, second. We've had discussion. All those in favor, signify by say nay. All opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Under tax assessor, order spreading on the miss, personal changes under the tax assessor's office as listed on file with payroll clerk and personnel department. Motion? Second, second. Discussion? All those in favor, signify by say nay. Are there, are there any reasons why they're decreased attached or? Can we start maybe getting a little reason why they're dec- while there's a decrease since it affects our bottom line? Just asking.
The reasons are usually on the.
Decrease, are this that? I don't see it on this one.
Which one are we on?
Number seventeen.
That's just payroll, that's payroll.
Oh, payroll.
That, that's not reduction or what?
Oh, I've jumped ahead to the next thing. I'm, in my mind, okay. That's the next question I'll be asking. All those in favor, signify by say nay. All opposed, motion carried. Did we get it first or the second? Number eighteen is order approving in-county travel reimbursement to the tax assessor's office. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, signify by say nay. All opposed, motion carried. And I will say thank you for putting the details on all of your, uh, gasses. That, that's very helpful. Okay, order acknowledging receipt of and allowing petitions for decreases to the two, twenty-twenty, um, real property rule as recommended by tax assessor. There's the decreases. Motion? Second? Discussion? All those in favor, signify by say nay. Opposed, motion carried.
I thought, did you say?
More.
More.
I'm sorry, what? All right. But do you go back out? Do you go back out or do they come in then when you have a decrease?
Normally these decreases are usually people that failed to file homestead.
Uh-huh. Okay.
I mean, there's usually something that, you know, affects the value, but it's not usually a lot.
I just wondered.
Class ones, class one, I think.
I just wondered how they, if they found it, the customer found it or you found it.
Both ways.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, yeah.
A decrease.
It's a decrease or they found it. Uh, number twenty. Made a motion in second, right? Uh, number twenty is order for big travel and, um, registration for Monica.
PK.
PK?
PK.
PK? PK, thank you. And Shannon Nikays, uh, to attend the International Association Assessing Officers IAAO. Of course, six hundred, January twenty-fifth and through the twenty-ninth, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Start for Mississippi estimated at twenty to two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars within budget. And, um, come from line item zero zero one dash nine oh three dash forty-four, four, four seventy-five. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, signify by say nay.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Uh, Justice Court?
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, President, a number sixty-four, it's on the board agenda, it represents the tax assessor's office. Will we go to that one that she's in here?
What number back? Number sixty-four. Sixty-four.
It's a contract.
All right, she's, but we just got through talking about it and I thought it might've been an addendum, but I didn't see it up here. Sixty-four.
So you're, you use the same company that the Sharon Nash, that the tax collector uses?
Yeah, he, he does a lot of work for, throughout the entire state, different counties.
Let me, let me read it and then.
If, if you don't mind, I'd like to approach and give you some samples.
Sure, and I'd, I'd like to go ahead and read it if there's.
Okay.
Order approving the letter of agreement between the Harrison County Board of Supervisors and DEFCO data uh, for printing services for tax assessor's office for mailing envelopes and all processing, printing and mailing services therein and authorizing the board president to execute the same. I have talked to this company.
We have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Well, will this, will this require a budget amendment as well?
Not right now.
Okay, this is, uh, for the personal property renditions that we mail out each year.
I'm talking about.
The, okay, the way we've been doing it, it, it was coming out of our budget. The only thing that was not included in our budget was the mailing fees. Everything that we mail from our office comes down to the mailroom and I don't know what budget it comes out of. But everything we mail comes to the mailroom, just like any other offices in this, in the county.
So Pam, do you know?
It would come, the mail, if it comes to the postage, if it comes out of our office in the postage and they pick it up, that's distributed out of the building and grounds because we don't have, we don't track it by the department. We don't track any of the mail by the department. So when it comes through us, they pick it up and they, they stamp it as twenty-eight cents a, um, envelope.
Why wouldn't it make more sense to do that by the department? So we'll have a bracket of what each department is actually sending in postage rather than having it come out of one shell of paper. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we do?
They would be doing it if they doing it out their department. They get their individual department and had it. When you come to the other one, we wouldn't know. It just comes to the mailbox. They just come in there and they put it in the, in the mailroom. You don't know who it's coming from. I mean, I guess you'll have somebody that was sitting there counting it and doing it every day.
What I'm trying to say is, what Paul was asking for is the same tax collector's asking for.
Okay.
There's some postage calls. It seems to me it would make sense that we would amend the budget if necessary to put that book so that it would be recorded as the tax assessors expense or the.
That's up to the board.
You can track it, you can track it if they're doing it this way. You can't track, on our, our end, um, unless we counted a thousand or whatever it is that goes out and, and said, okay, that's twenty-eight cents a thousand, we're gonna charge your budget that amount. We can do that. I mean, we can do it in-house and develop.
And then they can plan better, uh, and, and you might be able to, since you and the tax collector are using the same company. Maybe you could, uh, make a work a deal with them, you know? Maybe say, look, you're getting two companies here.
It's different. It's different what they're doing to their.
Same company, Greg.
It's the same company.
They just have, that company, each project that they have, like the, the, the tax collector now uses that same company to send out your bag with those.
Which is a postcard.
Right.
This is a, could be a three or four letter with envelope compared to a postcard.
Yeah, right. We understand that, but what we're saying, what we're saying is if you're using the same company, even though they're doing different things, they're set up to do those different things. You should be able to bargain with them a little bit, maybe even talk to Justice Court if they send out.
Oh, I don't mind talking to them. We can certainly try.
This, we could approve this, you know, with, at, at, at this time. But when budget hearings come back up, start to kind of maneuver your, your cloud as to having two different companies or go out for other, other people that do the same thing and say, well, we have two departments. And maybe you'll have three, maybe Justice Court wants to do the same thing or could want to mail out.
The postage amount is where you're gonna, I mean, they're fee, everybody, right now, they all quoting twenty-eight cents. That's what we currently pay for our mail. Anything that goes out of the county is twenty-eight cents. So all they're doing is, they're just saying, okay, we'll do it for twenty-eight cents, because since that's what y'all.
And we'll do it for.
They're doing it for cost, basically, but the other services, it's what we're wanting to be negotiating.
Right.
Yeah, because this.
And she explained to me the difference.
But if you're looking, the top, um, form is what we use. The ones behind. The ones behind that or other counties in the state that this company mails out for, and you tell the difference, they really look more professional when this company can do it.
And they're in an envelope, which I.
Yeah, they're gonna provide the window envelope, they're also going, going to allow for us to include a cover letter and they will, we have about sixty-five hundred accounts for personal property. Now, you can only have up to like three papers in one envelope. So any, any accounts that have more than that, they will put them in a nine by twelve clasp envelope and those are separate than the regular envelopes, they're gonna charge the stamp. You'll see the stamp and the cost of the envelope is a dollar per envelope on the nine by twelves.
How much, just a rough estimate, how many, how much you think you'd be mailing? How many pieces of mail?
Well, we have sixty, almost sixty-five hundred accounts. We normally have three hundred that go in the nine by twelve clasp envelopes, so the others sixty something hundred, sixty-three hundred in regular envelopes that will have up to three letters. Some of them have different locations and we put as many as we can in one envelope to save.
That was my, so unlike, unlike the tax collector, you combine your mailouts, cause I know from the tax collector, I get about five or six of those.
Correct.
And then invariably I miss one and then I have to.
But not only it, this is probably, it, we take two days of all of my personal property department to stay in the, not, I'm sorry, two days to print these renditions when we, we're doing them ourselves. We generally take a week for all my staff in that department to stay in and stuff these envelopes. So we're saving time and.
I talked directly to Travis, to the, and he, he told me the same thing at, in earlier times when I was talking to him. But I think they are, there's also a lot more services available that, I'd love to see y'all.
And look, I, I have to say, I, last year, you know, previous years, we've always sent out the homestead renewal cards and we're looking at forty thousand of those that we were normally sending out. So when I took office in January, I thought, you know, most of the time when people receive these cards, they don't even read the back of them. They're not reading the list on the back that tells them that they, they need to come in.
Right.
So I thought I'd do something different, so for twenty, we did not mail out the homestead renewal cards. We saved, we saved a lot of money by doing that. But what I did do, we sent out letters specifically for the changes that did occur that we knew about, deceased spouses, new deeds, people that we knew were turning over sixty-five years of age, divorces, anything that we knew specifically, these people had a change that they needed to come in for, we mailed them letters instead of forty thousand postcards. So we're saving money there, so anything we can do to save money, I will be glad to do it.
I think we work in, we work in a, we had a study, now we work in a stovepipe government, like nobody knows what the other one's doing. So if we can, like Justice Court does mailouts, find out the people that really do the mailouts and maybe, like I said, barking, but they, they won't do it with you, but they'll be doing, there's different departments that can maybe access the same company and the same service and lower the price.
Paul, does this one company do pretty much all the other counties?
He has told me, he, I think he says they do like fifteen counties in our state.
Some of them are two or three.
And these, we have some local ones, Jackson County uses them, Lamar County uses them. You'll, you'll see the samples. And what I really like about these also, what I've highlighted is in red when they print them. This is, this is what tells them about the 10% penalty if they do not render to a, by April first.
And, and.
And it also shows it on the back of the letter.
Oh, yeah.
It's in red, so we're, we're hoping that will get their attention also.
And the salesman also, I guess he said salesman, the representative, I should say, he used to be a tax collector.
That's correct.
So he has many ideas, he, he knows what works and what doesn't work.
That's right, and she didn't have to have a second quick, cause it should be another thousand.
Oh, yeah, it's way under five thousand.
Paul, are, are you statutorily obligated to mail those things, like tax collector?
At certain times.
We're not statutorily obligated to send out homestead renewal cards.
You're not there.
But we are on the personal property renditions.
By certain page.
Right. And like the letters that we're mailing out, we're doing it as a courtesy.
Yeah, just wondering what, what is statutory obligated?
You don't have to tell most of them when they turn sixty-five, they're out there waiting at the door to get there.
What's the, now, now, ten, six, five, we.
Generally trying to have a postcard.
On thirty-third of April, so they.
Got a better record. Yeah, that's a person.
He needs to know that. Cause that'd save you a ton of money.
I'll check on my. And he's come on up here.
Just your husband, like mine, just my husband.
Four, four, four.
Before January one, before January. January one is the lead day.
They differ, they, they, they.
All right, it's surprising what you learn, I mean, that, that company's very, very knowledgeable.
Let me ask Paul one more thing, so after I turn sixty-five, you're saying you only have to pay 25% of your property tax, of your thousand.
Well, let me just say this, you're exempt up to seventy-five thousand of price tag. Anything over that, you have to pay regular taxes on.
But you still get seventy.
Depends on what your value is.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're seventy, you're not gonna spend that much money, you don't pay any tax.
You value down, you're, you're really.
Fairly, Ms. Martin, if your, if your value was only a hundred thousand, then yes, you'd be paying.
Twenty-five percent, twenty-five thousand.
Or twenty-five thousand, you'd be paying on twenty-five thousand.
Be surprised when they go, insured is worth five hundred thousand, when they go in the tax. Lot less boys, it may have had it worth. That's why we always add the insurance, because that tells you what people think their house was worth.
Yeah, we did that one time, we had six hundred protests our first year in office, Marlon and I, first, that we had six hundred here that you got, because they hadn't had reappraisal in ten years, they were not happy. All right, we had a motion and a second, we've already voted, all those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Might be a good time to consider the amended agenda with the tax collector.
We already did that.
No, y'all just approved of it.
The motion was just to amend the agenda.
I have some more questions, if she comes back.
Well, we can ask her to come back.
Tax collector.
Okay, then somebody call her, tell her to come back. We'll do that at the end of the meeting. Is that there, all right?
I just want to get a estimate on how many, basically.
We'll do, we'll do that when she comes back, so we'll wait on this, Marlon. All those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried, what number?
Number twenty-one.
Twenty-one, oh, back. Thank you, Paul.
Thank y'all.
Praising everybody. I'm still getting there. She found out about that deduction that she got to get involved in. Okay. Twenty-one, this is what we're going back to, ladies and gentlemen, if I get there. Justice Court is order approving fee settlement payment to Harrison County Constables for the month of November twenty twenty as submitted by Justice Court Clerk and on file with Clerk, what were the motion?
Motion.
Second? Second? Discussion? All those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-two is order approving submission of MDEQ local solid waste assistance grant application in that of up to $24,863.41 for Harrison County's monthly household hazardous waste collection program and authorize, and authorizing the board president to execute the same, motion? Second? Discussion? All those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-three is order authorizing the board president to sign and submit grant reimbursement for twenty twenty and bring it event to SWC five forty-five in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and nineteen cents, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Sir.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-four is order approving claims as listed from the engineering department, motion?
Motion.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-five is order approving the extension of the Clear Water Solutions LLC contract for utility services for Harrison County emergency shelters in accordance with the terms and contract and authorizing execution by the board supervisors recommended by Jacque, Jaclyn Turner, PE Harrison County Engineer, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second, discussion, what is?
What is this?
For all my shelters.
Yeah, these are the shelters that have wells and they have to have certain certifications on a yearly basis and they come in and do those certifications and keep us compliant.
Have you shopped this out or are you just gonna arbitrarily keep, we didn't know what these guys?
They, they bid it, I think, last year and they had one more year extension and we'll, we'll do it again next year unless you would like to do it this year. I think they're doing a good job at a reasonable price and I'd like to extend it, but if you'd like to.
That nickel. Was the board's wishes to extend or to?
That's what we do.
Every, it comes, it comes up every two years, correct?
Right, right, we, we do the bid one year and then extend one year unless, in my opinion, unless they're doing a bad job, that that makes sense and then we'll bid it again next year.
Have they come up at any, I mean, have they come up with any, any increases or additional costs? What the board's wishes? Motion to extend, make a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-six, order approving assumption of eight streetlights in South North Swan subdivision, phase one B located in section twenty-one, township six south, range eleven west, Harrison County Districts five, and accordance with the Harrison County Land Development Ordinance as recommended by Jacque, Jaclyn, excuse me, Turner, PE Harrison County Engineer, and the final plat would be accepted September of twenty nineteen, motion?
Motion.
Second? Discussion? We had made this possible because the, of the expense that it cost if we had an entire subdivision that was vacant and had their lights on. Do, are, are we responsible for that bill, even the light bill, or is the developer responsible for that light bill as, tell me if I'm not making myself clear, but.
What I hear you asking is, are we paying the bill before houses are built?
Yes.
Okay, and, and we, we, when we receive a request to assume the light bill, like this example here, one of the things that we do before we put it on the agenda is go out and verify that there are built homes and people occupying them in those areas before we recommend assumption. And so as we assume groups, it's because there are residents there using them.
Okay, so the developers not respond, like we, we have a developer that's responsible for the roads and all those things for certain, so they're not responsible for paying for that bill whether they're vacant or not?
For the first year. When, when they're vacant and they're building and everything, then they pay the bill fully. Once there are occupied residents paying taxes, occupying the lots, then they request us to assume that bill. So once it's fully occupied, that's when this item comes to you.
We're not paying for any lights at a vacant lot.
Correct.
Board totally aborted, accepts the lights.
Yeah, but what I, what my point was, was is this necessary if, is it necessary if we, if the developer's paying it anyway? Should he just keep paying it and then, until we accept it? And by that time, the neighborhood will be finished and perhaps it would be safer, this is just a complaint that I've received, so I'm trying to articulate it and I'm not being as clear as I should. So if the developer has to pay the bill for everything for the first year, correct? Then if the, if we have not accepted it yet, would we do, is it better for us to do it in patches or is it better for us to do it all at one time, except the neighborhood all at one time, whether it's vacant or not? Cause the house is built and they still, there's still gonna be vandalism, et cetera there. It's up to you, I mean.
I don't, I don't know if I'm understanding.
Okay, right now, we're not paying for any vacant lots, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do we pay for the light once the house is completed but it's still empty?
No, there are residents occupying the houses and we go out and verify it for that group.
Okay, would it be easier to accept the, we accept the roads, to accept the lights as well and turn all of them on at one time as opposed to having vacant homes, possibly vacant homes there without lights? You may have three with the house on, three with the lights on, a row of vacant houses and three with the lights on.
So I think the lights are on anyway, because when we accept them, we, we take the bill that they've been paying to have the lights turned on, they're just paying the power bill in the meantime. So once they're, so the lights are on, from the time we plat it and allow them to start building, the lights are supposed to be on.
Okay, we, we need to check that because sometimes I don't think that happens.
If you hear complaints where that's happening, let us know, because the lights are supposed to be on from the time they plat it, but we don't start paying the bill until they're occupied and we verify that.
Cause, okay, I need to check that, cause that was not happening in, in one part of North Swan. Let, North Swan, my legacy there.
Seems to be common. Yeah, if you hear of any specific areas like that, let us know, we'll absolutely follow up on them, but that's how it's supposed to work.
Okay, and I'm sorry it took me so long to explain it, but.
No problem.
I didn't know exactly.
Yes.
How to do that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Have we passed it? Number twenty-six?
Do you see to vote on it?
Okay, motion second, all those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-seven is order approving the final plat of Wolf River River Preserve subdivision as recommended by Jaclyn Turner, PE Harrison County Engineer and authorizing the board president to execute the following, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Under Road Department is order adjudicating overtime in the Road Department as attached, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, discussion, all those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-nine is order adjudicating the sub, the resumme of the continuation application for senior companion program for two years, for year two, in the amount of two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-three hundred dollars, as requested by the Corporation of the National Community Services or Service, covering the budget amount of April one twenty twenty-one through March twenty-one twenty twenty-two to include pandemic augmentation of fifteen thousand dollars in additional federal funds, increasing the funding project to two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. The guaranteed shared remain is fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. Motion?
Motion, but it's forty-nine.
Second? Forty-nine, what does that say, thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
About forty-nine, I was trying to get an extra ten more, ten thousand. Motion second? All those in favor signify by say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number thirty.
I have Colleen Barrett here for the first case. She is the planner for the CB base. I have a typo on item thirty, the part that was tabled, that was tabled from the planning Part that was tabled, that was tabled from the planning commission meeting in September, so that should not have been on the agenda. Really, we're doing the regular case files like everything else, so we would ask that you concur with the recommendations of the planning commission for cases thirty through thirty-seven.
What is, so what's the CB base doing since she's obviously?
So the, this is a subdivision on South Carp Bridge Road where the, the western property line abuts the CB shooting range. That's right.
Yeah.
So the application has been amended, they're only doing the houses on the south part of the property, so none of those houses will get close to the property line.
How, how close? We're talking about the shooting range that you can hear.
Is angled in a different way, but the perimeter property lines would, would touch, so.
I, I would rather, I, this is in my district and I already have a tremendous amount of complaints from shooting range, you can hear it miles and miles and miles. It's already across from a school, a senior system center.
Now, so this developer is trying to clear these two hundred and sixteen acres that abuts the shooting range, correct? And to build houses.
It's, they're only gonna do the first phase on the south side of the property. This particular property has a creek that runs through it, so there is a physical separation between the proposed two phases, but this is only a rule for phase one.
You're doing phases, you're not, you're asking for phase one?
Only phase one on the south side where the houses do not come all the way to the western.
I'd really like to have, and I also ask, I read some of the concerns of the engineer.
Yes.
Ingress in it.
Those are all included in minutes reflected.
Yeah, the minutes reflect it, but nothing else reflects it. I'd, I'd like to table this until I could find out a little bit more and talk to, do a little bit more research. Like I said, it's in my district and I'm the one that gets the calls, so. There's two of them in here, I think, that I need to, all, all the ones in district five, I'd like to take a table at this moment because I just haven't had time to do enough research and foot maps and there's another. There's only two of them.
Thirty-four. Number thirty-four is.
Thirty-four is as well?
That's correct.
Okay, all the ones in district five, I'd like to table, make a motion to table. Can I get a motion to table?
What's wrong with this?
District thirty-four is a single property, is a commercial property in Sosher, it's got nothing to do with.
Okay, good, good, all right, that's good, okay, I've got it, I ran them all, I just. Okay, all of the, the first two, I want to have more time because that's. Uh, one and two.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-one is Robinson Road in District thirty.
Okay, we want thirty and thirty-one.
No, thirty-one's in my district, I don't have a problem.
Thirty-one's in you, all I have is thirty?
Yes.
Thirty-four was a split send property from the year two thousand.
But they have something here that was tabled.
That was a mistake on, on my part, putting it on the board agenda, it should not have been separated like that, it's the same case.
They had a table.
Okay, I was wondering, because I said that was tabled, how did it get on our board if it was tabled from y'all? But anyway, okay, I see. So I'd just like to take district five, number thirty out and table that. You have a motion?
Just off of that.
Just for that, just that one.
I believe that the other case that you're thinking of is on next week's agenda in Biloxi, that was the extension of the subdivision on.
On North Swan Road, there's another one coming up.
It is coming up, but it's not.
And I'd like to discuss that with you too. So, can we have a motion to table number thirty? You have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. I just have some questions, I'm not necessarily against it, I'm just very concerned about the shooting range and any more development means lots more complaints.
We address that with.
Why don't we just have the CB base since they're here and obviously interested, very caring about our taxpayers? Why don't y'all just build some kind of soundproof from out there and let them make all this progress?
Well, I've been trying to talk to them about that, just, and nobody has, wants to spend the money.
She's there, right?
But she wants to come up and give her name and.
Come on, look, girl, we're waiting for you.
I'm Colleen Barrett, I'm the community planning liaison officer for this city base. So we've been listening to the conversations that planning commission is having because the subdivision came up as described, adjacent to our wool market range. It's outside the containment zones for the weapons and those are, you know, set up to one in a million, so the safety concerns are well contained within our property. The noise contours are also outside of this property, so there aren't direct noise concerns over the subdivision. However, as Rocco has alluded to, this is, this is exactly why I have a job. So when those complaints come up and concerns from residents arise, this is the exact kind of development that tends to not go well with military operations. So while there's no direct incompatibility that we can point to, having the overlay district allowed us to have that conversation with the developer. So the initial development had homes directly adjacent to our property boundary, which had some of the lots creating a concern, that's not what's before you all today. So it's marginally better, but again, there will be folks who come in, maybe do not know from their real estate agent that there is a Navy training range, right, close proximity? And we have about four million rounds that are expended on that range annually. It operates forty-eight of fifty-two weeks a year, so we're busy and they may not care to be our neighbors. So in the event that that happens, they will be calling one of y'all or me, so.
No, they don't call you. Trust me, they don't call you, but, but, but my issue, and has been my issue from the very beginning, is that we, the Navy base, and that we all come together and ask for a soundproof wall around that facility. Because when you're on Curry Road, which is miles away, and the subdivisions knocking on doors, you can hear, I mean, it sounds like they're next door.
Just the bombs are.
The bombs, yeah, they're, they're marginal because they don't really do those, but they, but it's very, very loud, even that far away. And that is, and it's also in the, in the growth pattern of Biloxi. It's in a straight, the whole, I mean, I love the military, don't get me wrong, I'm married to a Marine, okay, so I'm all about the military. And my dad was in the military, both my brothers.
My mom was here a couple.
However, yes, right, we get there too. But the, it's in the growth pattern, direct derog- growth pattern of the city of Biloxi. And now it's affecting people's daily lives because this has increased. I think it's used, multiple uses, not just used by the Navy base anymore, it's used by multiple.
Correct.
Military.
Yes.
So while I love the sound of freedom, now all back at one hundred percent, we need some type of sound barrier besides those little bitty tiny pencil trees that they, that are about this big around, that they planted as a sound barrier. Because it was better without, when we had a forest there almost, you know, but now always they have, the Forest Service has said that we, they planted these itty bitty trees that are not very mature and not doing the job.
We discussed as your favorite, we'll have a study to look at the noise and see if the contours are different than what we accounted for from the previous study.
Study's easy, you just go outside. On that day they're shooting, drive as far as you can drive and see how far you can hear it.
Yes, we talked with some of our public health officials that are with the Army that can do that kind of analysis for us and we'll, we'll have good data to be able to plan better and see if there would be any possible noise attenuation measures that we could be done in the design that would provide the necessary mitigations.
Because we've been working on it now for four, two, three, how many years?
Probably four years.
Four years, and I've been saying the same thing for four years and it's.
We have one more phase of implementation studies, hopefully we'll get to that one.
One of the items that we added to that implementation through the Gulf Regional Planning Commission is to add a military element to the comprehensive plans so that it could get folded into the conversations about how the county wants to grow and that the military's accounted for.
I think it's the city that is gonna really be more interested in that probably, I don't know if you've checked with them, but have you checked with them, Beverly, on the being the?
We're always with them.
Growth pattern. Okay, so.
What are the challenges?
We'll beat this horse now, because it's just about dead, but we'll keep beating it.
One of the challenges there is the private shooting range is next to the military range, so the military range, we've done tours on both properties.
I have to.
Squared away.
I have to, and I've heard it, we need to come out there one day when they're really getting with it. It's almost daily. Thank you, dear. You'll take that message back for me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have a, have a motion to table number thirty and move on to thirty-one, we have a motion. Pat, you want to repeat that?
So we request that you accept the recommendations of the planning mission for items thirty-one through thirty-seven.
Motion. Tabling yet?
Yeah, we voted.
Y'all voted on the table.
We already voted.
Shall I make a motion to accept the recommendations of the planning commission?
Second discussion, the only thing I found in there that was interesting that we hadn't seen before, it's a good idea, but I want to check legal on it. In reference to these public parks or whatever that has been planned in subdivision, the zoning commission in its approval, I think, based on your letter, Jackie, that if the housing organization, the HOA, if the HOA either disbands or doesn't take, or whatever happens to the HOA, then it falls back that the county can assess the members' tax on their property to take care of those parks and public areas that's approved. And I don't know if we can do that, Tim, but that's a tax law. The zoning commission can impose the potential of taxes on properties, so I'm not, Jackie, I think that, I know where you're going with that, that's a good idea because but potentially, I don't know if we can do that, and I got concerns ultimately of this county being responsible to maintain parks and areas and subdivisions. That increases the value of those, those properties and the developer reaps those values, but we ultimately, the taxpayers, line up maintaining them, and I got a issue with that. And I don't think legally, Tim, we can address that, whether we can, we can, that can fall back and we can put taxes on properties based on the zoning commission.
Legally cannot, I don't think the county can set a tax to a particular subdivision or a particular park. The only thing about the park is that park would not become a public park, the county accepted it as a public park. Or the, you know, private park, the county can accept it dedicated to the public, but we accept it for maintenance. It's not really a, it's not, the county would have.
What number is that?
Concern about is the one that's on today that has that stipulation in there.
What number is it?
The planning commission understands that that is a goal, and I would say that only, out of ten subdivisions, only one actually establishes a homeowners association. They all say that they're gonna do it, but they actually don't do it.
They don't, Marlon, and what happens, Marlon, if I may interject, she, you get a public park and they let it go, then they want the county to clean it.
Cut the grass.
And it does cut the grass and, and the developer washes his hands of it as soon as it's turned over to the county.
Well, what I want to make sure is, is what Tim's talking about, that we're not accepting this with this approval, we're not accepting it for maintenance, and we need to make that clear.
Not the one we take.
If we are, then we.
As another. Which one is it has that in there?
Also, this item right here. Yeah, also, this item right here is, is concurring with the planning board's recommendation for the zoning change and conditional use only. They have not yet submitted an actual subdivision application, that still has to happen, and then design plan review comes after that. We've, we've talked in a couple meetings before about trying to find a way to make these processes work a little bit better, but I, I don't think anybody expects that it's there yet. And I think it's a much stronger basis for the county to complete work and look at an assessment if it's in the public health and safety interest, but not necessarily for maintaining a recreational park.
And I've got some major concerns with this whole process changing, what you're wanting to tack on there for requirement, what you're coming up with. So I think we, board definitely needs to look at all that and vote on it before they start implementing it, because I'm hearing that you do are implementing stuff, but this board has not approved yet, and I just want to make sure that's not happening.
So since around two thousand nine, all new subdivisions have to have at least one little top park, play park for every fifty lots, so it's a old rule. We have one developer right now who's really doing an exceptional job on their parks, they're really making it an amenity, but most of them view it as a burden.
What I don't want is the county taxpayers having to pay to maintain that amenity for that particular subdivision.
Right.
And they're not getting the benefits of that, but that increases the value and the developer gets the benefit of it and then he walks off.
So my question is, because we have wetlands that are in everybody's backyard that they are letting, they have no.
We have effectively stopped that.
Okay. And then the other is the, are these parks, or, they don't have to be parks, they can be retention ponds or whatever, whatever else that goes on. It's supposed to be maintained by the HOA and that doesn't exist, they don't, they, after a year, they do not exist, they don't want to exist because they don't want their neighbor doing something and they want the county to come out and fix it and the complaint, but they don't want to put together their HOA, so.
That's what I was trying to give, legally, we can't do one.
Assessment, I don't know where that came from, the county, it has taxes just like, just like any park does maintain through taxes. And so these parks, we've had this problem, as y'all know, in several locations. The subdivisions are platted and they have a public park in there, but until the county accepts it for maintenance, like a road, so we accept that road for maintenance, it's not required to maintain it. Problem comes up is where it gets overgrown and it's a problem and the systems start to leak.
Tim, can we legally include those in our bonds for roads or no?
No, not for roads.
But you see what I mean, if we do the bond for builders for roads, that could be an option, but you're saying that's not legal?
No, no, if the county wanted to borrow money to, to maintain parks.
No, I don't mean we get a bond, I mean the builder gets the bond.
Oh, no.
But that expires. And by the time, by the time the bonds would expire, the parks then start to degenerate, and that's when the calls that come referring to.
It's really, but, but legally should happen, this is a problem across the state, the board attorneys discuss this all the time, we have communications back and forth. This is a statewide problem because of the way the law is written, they form these HOAs and then the HOAs either go away, they don't maintain their membership. The way you force them to do it is you say, we're not gonna maintain it, you have to, I remember a meeting Connie and I had with. Somebody that had an HOA, we made them form another HOA.
Curry.
Sewer thing out there, we had a big meeting, they were, they wanted to lynch us because I said, the only way to solve this problem is for y'all to call a meeting and the majority of the people vote, put people in your HOA, then you can control it. But all those that didn't want the HOAs get mad and that, that's where the dispute comes in, that's the only way. If we're not, if the county says, we're not maintaining this park, that's your responsibility to get your HOA together and administer the park. I, I live in a subdivision with the HOA, we pay a hundred and seventy dollars a year, not this huge expense. And so, you know, it's just part of the process of being in a subdivision with a HOA.
It seems to me that they don't want their neighbor doing something, but they don't want somebody telling them they can't. but they don't want somebody telling them they can't do it. That seems to be the biggest issue that they have. But, I mean, they could make it simple, like keep your front yard a certain way, and keep your backyard a certain way, and do that. You don't have to be, it didn't have to be some long document them to enforce. And if they don't, then they have that hundred dollars a year, whatever, money to clean it up and charge it to their neighbor. I don't know how they work, but I'm just saying, there's got to be some way to make these developers walk away. They walk away and leave us with drainage issues. They walk away and leave us with parks we can't maintain. They walk away with parks we don't even know exist, because we didn't know it was a park in that, you know, in that flat.
I hate to delay it all.
And the parks are always in the wetlands, which means our guys have to get out there and clean them by hand, in, you know, by hand.
Right, it's a problem. But HOAs are designed to function as a small governmental entity over a subdivision. The problem is when that HOA does not function, if they don't organize, or they don't stay organized, and they fall apart, and the neighbors are mad and don't want to be told what to do by their HOA, then the county gets the complaints. All really, the only way to handle it is to say, this is not a county problem, this is your problem. Go form your HOA.
That's exactly what I was going to suggest. It's not our problem. And be careful when we say park and playground, they're two very different things. That's some of the verbiage that we had to be clear on. Some people say park, but it's actually playground equipment in some of them. The rest are just parks, and that's just cutting grass. But I agree with you. Say, we're not responsible, and people who move in need to understand that.
And we do have to watch, just about, until the board is aware.
They don't like.
There are problems sometimes. We had a subdivision that had a dam across it, and they built a road, I think.
Yes.
Then they built a road across the dam.
And that's a big problem.
They asked the board to accept a public road for maintenance. And the board accepted the public road for maintenance, but specifically accepted that from that, the dam underneath the road. Well, this year went by, nobody, the HOA did not maintain the dam. It was fixing to fail, and in that case, the board did say.
It did fail.
Did eventually fail, I never heard from them, but eventually we closed the roadway and blocked it off so that nobody could cross it, it was dangerous. But that's a situation where the HOA was told, this is your responsibility.
Well, I told them an option was we could drain the lake, and then they all quit calling. That's true, that was what Jackie said, that's one option, but they didn't want that. So they didn't mind the road being closed.
Those kind of things probably.
I think that's.
The planning station, not accept a road or cross the top of the dam, which was a bad, a terrible problem.
But to clarify, what we approved today is not acceptance of that.
Not as a publicly maintained.
Not as a publicly maintained park. We need to know that.
This is not even accepting or approving the subdivision. This is approving or concurring with the zoning recommendation.
Well, we are.
Okay, just going to point out.
Subdivision can happen, but the.
Make sure that we're aware of this when it comes to the point that we don't approve that, acceptance. I've had, I can wing dance as an example. We were taking care of some public, some parks or whatever you want to call them, that we had, we had no obligation to do, and they were expecting it.
They think a park is a park.
Yeah.
And the county's supposed to take care of it, and that's not unusual, it's.
That's exactly.
And we vote on.
And if we somehow can get that to the public, that we're not, you know, going to be responsible for.
We just need to tell the builders, just be very clear when we give them our new guidelines.
You can't find the builders.
Just make that very clear, you know.
When these complaints come in, you can't find the builders.
Yeah.
He's out, he's over, he's done, he's done with his job. Okay, where are we here?
Don't worry, I tell this board, I tell this board.
One through thirty-seven, are y'all ready to redote? We've had a motion second. We've had a motion second, you ready? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried number thirty-eight is ordered to currate the county administrator personnel changes and listed and on file with the payroll clerk and personnel department. Motion second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried number thirty-nine is ordered to currate the road department with road manager on employment as listed and on file with payroll clerk and personnel department. Motion second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried number forty-eight, order spreading on the minutes personnel changes shared department is listed on file with payroll clerk and personnel department. Motion second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried, you catching all that?
Got it.
Okay. All right, number forty-one is order approving claims as listed and toward county. Motion second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried under purchasing orders, order accepting the local North Lake primer elevator and lift LLC in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars payable from the account zero zero one dash one five one dash five eight one for the west elevator repair at Harrison County Judicial District One courthouse. Guffport, Mississippi, and authorizing the board president to execute the contract agreement after review by the board attorney. Payment shall be made as follows. Motion second.
Second, is this who has the elevator service? Pam, is this our existing elevator company?
No, they're working, I think they're working together. We use Coastal Elevator, but they couldn't do it, he's working with this more.
Can we not bid that out like we do?
Because I've never heard of this company.
Yeah, they're working together. It's somebody that Coastal and them got together. We don't bid, we don't, we have a maintenance agreement on the elevators, but this is.
Extra stuff.
And we have to.
Okay, motion is second.
After the board return, after those review, the board of time, they've already written it, so it's ready for execution.
Time to vote. Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried under sheriff, is recognized the sheriff as in reports on the number of individuals currently housed in the jail facility. Motion. Motion to let him, to recognize him. Go ahead.
There's currently a six hundred and forty-eight in jail, sixty-nine at the work center, total seven seventeen, forty-four misdemeanors, one hundred and fourteen females, thirty-four that have cleared state arrest, and thirty-seven federal inmates. I just have one thing.
Okay, under, under the next one, this is order, order acknowledging, number forty-four is, I have a motion. We spread that out a minute. So number forty-four is order acknowledging receipt of the monthly inmate meal log from Harrison County Adult Detention Center for the month of November twenty twenty as on file with the county administrator, statute nineteen twenty-five.
Second.
Motion second.
Second.
Where is it, where is it listed? I didn't see an attachment.
It's thick in my office.
It's real thick in your office?
But I think we forwarded the email to y'all, but you didn't, I'll report.
We just, Pam.
Okay, thank you.
I got, I got one thing.
I am, I'm good, let me finish with you, and then we'll do that one last, and we'll be read. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried under, recognize the sheriff is, no, 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 no. Order approving claims as listed.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Order spreading on the minutes following executed documents.
Motion.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Order adjudicating payment, pay application number two from Samuel Day Construction for the construction of the building of Harrison County Law Enforcement Training in the amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred and five dollars payable from zero zero one dash two hundred dash nine oh two. Motion second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number forty-eight is order adjudicating signature of twenty nineteen. Board President Marlon Lattner on the FY twenty Mississippi Office of Highway Safety sub grant closeout form and spreading minutes, spreading on the minutes. Motion second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number forty-nine is order accepting donation of thirty-three foot marine patrol boat with two OB, three fifty-five horsepower mercury, ooh, mercury motors, including trailer and Mississippi Department of Marine Resources directing the inventory clerk to add same to the Harrison County inventory list. Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Motion to amend the, amend the agenda to the sheriff's addendum. Have a motion, let me do a motion.
A motion.
Second, motion to amend, rejected. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Now, sir.
We need to purchase a forklift. It's, I've got two quotes, the one with the lowest quote, which is eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Where the other one's just got a hydraulic, we can't fix, I'm just pulling too much money out of it. So we're going to trade this one in and give another one.
We have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion second.
Thank y'all.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Do you have that paper? You want to give it to Brittany? Thank you. All right, under county administrator order, approving mileage reimbursement in county in travel for employees. Motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Order adjudicating submission of twenty twenty-one emergency medical services operating fund EMSO F grant application. Application deadline was November thirteenth, twenty twenty. Motion second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number fifty-two, under comptroller, is order authorizing interface, interface loans and repayments per the attached scheduled motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number fifty-three is order authorizing the transfer in the amount of sixty-six, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents from the general fund zero zero one dash nine hundred dash nine fifty to the EMSO F fund one two two dash zero 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 three eighty-seven for FY twenty twenty shipping costs that were not allowed under the grant. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, what?
Pam?
Pam? Pam?
Yes.
Number fifty.
This is.
It's paying for shipping costs to the board.
Yeah, shipping costs are not allowed to be parked out of the EMSO F funds. The money doesn't get from them, so we have to pay for that, which would transfer the money to cover that shipping cost.
Okay, number, you understand? Fine, you voted? All those in. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our number fifty-four is order authorizing the reimbursement to road fund one five zero 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 three sixty in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents for the delivery and pickup election equipment in the various voting precincts payable from zero zero one dash one eighty dash period, excuse me, period five eighty-one. Motion second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number fifty-three is order authorizing transfer in the amount of one million five hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents for the road protection fund, from the, from the road protection fund. San Beach, one five six dash nine hundred dash nine fifty to Tropical Storm Cristobal Fund, one seven two zero 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 three eighty-seven to reimburse the expenditures incurred, detailed attached. Motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Is number six fifty-six, order authorizing transfer in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars from the general fund, zero zero one dash nine hundred dash ninety to the two percent unemployment comp revolving fund, one zero seven dash zero 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 dash three eighty-seven to bring cash balance up to required levels. Motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number fifty-seven, order authorizing the payment in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents to our ex benefits unpaid Medicaid claims payable from zero zero one dash one two one dash four sixty-eight, detailed attached. Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion.
We need to let Diana check this out for us.
Over six years, I would know all those.
Yep, she might be cleaning up a lot of stuff.
Yeah, because she's got all the Medicaid experience.
Yeah. The motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number, the under chancery clerk is number fifty-eight is order approving payment of claims as listed.
Motion.